Well done, Chariot. Kyungye. Okay, shoulders forwards. Just a short warm-up before we do some kicking and punching the pads. Backwards. Hands on your shoulders forwards. So remember, we've got the timer here. The timer is going to be 50 seconds for each one. So if you need to know how long is left, you just need to check out the timer. That'll tell you how long is left. Backwards. One forwards, one backwards. Change. Hands on your hips, circle your hips round. Change. Feet together, hands on your knees, circle your knees. Change. Change again. Lifting your knees. A bit higher. A bit faster. Out to the side. Inwards. Okay, shaking your legs off. All right, so pad holder, we're just going to start with punches again, nice and easy. Okay, just going to do 10 punches and then turn. 10 punches, keep turning. Okay. Press it down. That's it. Okay, let's start. Okay, so 10 punches and then we turn 180 degrees, then 10 more punches. If you can't turn, okay, just try and do 45 degrees or 90 degrees to one side. So they have to step a little bit before they do 10 punches. Are you ready? Ready? Let's go! 30 seconds to go. Hey, stop there, stop there. Swap the pads over. Where's your pad holder today, Adonis? It's just you, is it? All right. Okay, swap the pads over, round two, ready, 10 punches, turn. Let's go! 25 to go. 10! Stop there, stop there. Well done. Swap the pads over. Okay, so this time, we're still staying with the punches and we're going to do two punches. So we go one, two, then duck, then four punches. One, two, three, four, and duck. And then six punches. With no duck. So it's two punches, duck, four punches, duck, six punches, no duck. Okay? And then start again. Okay, we don't have to move this time. Okay, ready. It's funny when they duck after six when they're not meant to. Okay, so don't forget to laugh. Are you ready? 50 seconds. Let's go! Very good.
Waiting for it.
One, two, three, four. Good. One, two. One, two. Very good. Ah, no, my fault! Okay, stop there. Turns out I was worse at it than Will was, never mind.
You're going to do it.
If you're that bad.
I'm going to duck, I could sneak through, not beg up.
Ready? Go!
You might have a neck.
Grace is down for the count. Okay, stop there, stop there. Well done if you managed to do it all right. Very good, very good. Swap the pads over, swap over. Okay, so now, we're going to do two turning kicks. Two punches. And then an axe kick. Okay? And then we just, we go back to the two turning kicks, two punches, but then we axe kick on the other leg. Okay? So two kicks, two punches, axe kick, and then alternate the axe kick leg. Are you ready? 50 seconds. Ready, Grace? Go! Now speed it up! 20 left! Definitely getting better. 10! Okay, stop there. Swap the pads over. Well done guys, well done. So two turning kicks, two punches, and an axe kick. Emil, what are you doing? Ready? Round two. Go! Did you stretch first? In the queue, from the pads. Axe kick because of your axe kick. Just take what the pads should have. Faster.
I am, but in my hand it is.
10 left!
Axe kick, punch.
Good condition. Okay, stop there. Swap over, swap over. Round two, ready? Two turning kick. Oh no, sorry, yeah, we've done that, relax. I knew that, we finished that one. Okay. So we're going to do two turning kicks on one side, so we do double here, look, one, two, then four. Four. And then six. Then it's back to two again. Two, then four, then six. Two, four, six, two, four, until we finish, okay? Do four singles. Ready? Go! Two. Four. Six. Two. Four. Six. Oh, sorry. Two. Six. Two. Four. Six. Two. Oh, be nice. Six. 10! Two. Four. Okay, stop there. Swap over. Round two, ready, round two. Remember, it's two, then four, then six, keep going. Try and speed it up. If it's easy for them, lift the pads higher and higher. Ready? Let's go! Two. Four. Six. Two. Four.
My knee.
Six. Six. Two. Four. 10 left! Six. Okay, stop there, stop there. Very good, well done. Swap the pads over. Well done if you've done it all so far and you haven't held the pads. You've just done all of the kicking and punching, well done. Very good. Okay, now we're going to punch off the front hand. Okay, remember, when we punch off the front hand, whichever leg is in front, that's the front hand. So with our guard up like this, we don't want to bring our hand back at all. We just want to go forwards. Okay, so if you watch, watch as soon as you put the pad up, the person should punch it. Okay, so don't just put it up, put it up, put it up. Okay, we're going to wait. Put it up as soon as it's up, they've got to punch. Okay? Now, if you don't have anyone to hold the pads for you at home, when I put the pad up here, then you punch. Okay? But otherwise, if you've got pads, then it's up to you when you put it up. Okay, but don't put it up at the same time each time because that teaches them nothing. All right, are you ready? 50 seconds. Ready? Let's go! Change legs each time. Grace, stop this around. 25 left! 10 left! Okay, stop there. Don't look at the clock, it wasn't started yet, sorry. Swap the pads over. Ready? Remember, make sure it's a different timing to hold the pad up. Give them something to react to. Ready? 50 seconds. Let's go! More power. In. Come on, more power! Step further back. Faster, faster, come on! 20 le- 20 left! Faster! 10! Step further back. Good. Go, stop there, stop there. Well done guys, well done. Swap the pads over. Grab a drink if you need a drink. Okay, so now we're doing axe kick. We've got axe kick followed by double punch. So we're doing axe kick, double punch, and then two turning kicks with a skip. Okay, so Tigers, if you can't do the two turning kicks with a skip, just stick with the axe kick, double punch. Okay, tis up to you though, if you want to try the other one, that's fine. So it's axe kick, double punch, and then two turning kicks with a skip. Okay? Are you ready? 50 seconds, are you ready, Grace?
Yes.
Ready? Let's go! 20 left! Okay, stop there. Swap the pads over. Round two, axe kick, double punch, two turning kicks with a skip. Remember, if no one's holding the pad, just take the timings from me, whenever I do it, you do it. Okay, ready, 50 seconds, ready, sir? Let's go! Oh, you're already. Change the axe kick leg each time! Come on, with a skip, keep going, come on, where's your fitness? 20 left! Did not. Keep going! Five! Okay, stop there, stop there. Well done guys, pad holders, you're amazing today. Fantastic, well done. Swap the pads over if you need to. Okay, now, Tigers, you're going to do something different to the Taekwondo now. So Tigers, you're going to do double sidekick. So two sidekicks. Now remember, with a double sidekick, only the second one hits the pad. So watch when we do double, we go one, two. Okay, so the first one comes close, but then when you hop forwards again, the second one hits the pad. Watch again. So one and two. So double sidekick, so we kick, hop, kick, and the second one hits the pad. Now change legs each time when you do your double sidekick, please. Okay, now everybody else, you're going to do a reverse sidekick. Or a jumping reverse sidekick. Okay, that looked fantastic from where I was stood. But, okay, don't forget, change legs each time. Okay, reverse sidekick or jumping reverse sidekick, it's up to you which one you do. Okay, are you ready? Ready, 50 seconds, ready? Ready, mom?
Yeah.
Let's go! 20 seconds to go. 10 left! Okay, stop there, stop there. Well done guys, that was a tough one, well done. Swap the pads over, swap the pads over. No cuddles or kisses during the Taekwondo classes, Emil. Okay, swap over, ready? Round two. Ready? Go! Get some distance between you and the planet. Did not.
Amazing at this.
Definitely improved, especially with that leg. Your left leg needs one, but your right leg's alright. 10 left!
Yeah, that's right.
Sorry, your right leg needs one, your left leg's good. Hey, stop there, stop there. Well done everyone, well done. Swap the pads over. That was a tough one. Adonis, stop showing everyone your wifi password. Okay, now flying sidekick. Flying sidekick. So, pad holders, all you need to do is hold the pads like this. And they take a run up from the garden, okay, and fly inside. Not really, not really. Hold the pad out to the side like this. You take one step, maybe two, okay, for a flying sidekick. Or it's more like a jumping sidekick like this. And then change legs each time. So Tigers can do this and Taekwondo. It's fine, everyone can do it. Okay, ready, 50 seconds. Kick with the edge of the foot, remember, edge of your foot. Ready? Go! Too long.
That's why I put my head.
Yep. Here's a flying sidekick specialist. 30 seconds to go. 15! Five! Okay, stop there. Well done guys, some great flying sidekicks there, well done. Very good. Round two, now that they're fully warmed up, you can hold it a little bit higher. Okay, are you ready? Try not to hit your head on the chandelier. Ready, round two. Ready? Let's go!
I've got this.
Very good. You're doing fine. 15 left! 10. Okay, stop there. Awesome. Okay, pad holders, thank you very much, you can put the pads away. You did a great job again this week, well done, thank you. Okay, grab a drink if you need a drink. And then legs out wide. Just stretching out your legs. Well done guys, some great kicking and punching today. Awesome. Bit wider. Bit wider. Okay, gently lower yourself to the ground. Stand up to sit on anyone behind you. Okay, bring your feet in. Push your knees out to the side. That's it. Oh, Harvey, you've got your mum stretching as well, that's good. Very good. Okay, shaking your legs up and down. So well done everyone and thanks for joining in on our padwork session again this week. Same again next week, we're going to keep going, obviously, keep doing the padwork all the time we're in lockdown. Okay, the only time it'll stop is when we, when we're back in the hall doing full-time lessons. Okay, everybody stand up. For my volunteers today, well done sir, well done mom. Chariot. Kyungye. Well done guys, well done, very good. Well done guys, well done, very good.